What about generals?
You'll have to ask.
Well, they're gonna fly through our workroom instead of taking Alice's. Instead of the food.
But Alice does.
I saw him this afternoon.
It'll be up to the chairman, basically, if they catch us before we start.
All the different classes for virtual license is going to be different. It's hard. I usually don't, I usually don't, uh.
Yeah, just, just give me a second and we'll put him on.
Having the appointed time of 5:30 arrived, I would like to call the Tuesday, May 25th, 2021 Committee of the Whole to Order.
Please rise to the plate of the lead.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mics on, mics on, mics on.
Mics aren't on.
Mics are not on.
Mics are not on.
We're letting Tony know. There you go.
Alrighty, thank you, sir. Mr. Clark, would you please take the role?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Folgenzie.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman Desenzo.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donilon.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, a forum is present.
Thank you. I would accept a motion for the approval of the May 11th, 2021 Committee.
Second.
It's been moved in a second. Any discussion? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, no nays. Ayes have it. Are there any questions on the OBM contract report? We didn't have any in last week's council. I just wanted to make sure.
I don't know if I got it.
I think I got it.
We got the old one.
Okay.
Couple of weeks ago.
Do we, do we have any information from them? Anybody from that office here tonight?
We got, yeah, we had it about three weeks ago. We've had a meeting since, but I don't think anyone remembered to bring it up.
Correct. Alright, thank you, seeing there's no questions. I am aware of two presentations. Am I correct, Mr. Clark?
One that I know of.
Okay. Alrighty. Alright, and who would that be from?
Flock Safety.
Alrighty. Alright, thank you, sir. And your name is?
Dan Murdock.
And you represent?
Flock Safety.
Alright, and what will you be speaking to us on tonight, my friend?
License plate reading cameras for the city.
Alright.
Go ahead.
Yep, go ahead.
Great. So first of all, really appreciate everyone taking the time today to learn a little bit more about some of the technology the police department is looking at. My name is Dan Murdock. I work for Flock Safety. The city of Springfield has been looking at license plate reading cameras to help the police department understand what vehicles are moving through town, which ones have committed crimes and use that for their investigations, as well as get alerts when stolen vehicles, vehicles that are tied to warrants, open investigations are moving through town. They, one of the reasons the city looked at Flock Safety is because we are the largest LPR vendor in Illinois. We work with more than 50 cities around the state, including some, some large ones in your area like Decatur. And just a little background on Flock Safety, we've been around for about five years and we came into being because our founder and CEO, he was actually head of his own Homer Association in a neighborhood just outside of Atlanta. And they had an issue with people coming in their neighborhood, checking for unlocked cars, stealing stuff out of cars. Pretty common crime. I'm sure it happens here. And they called the local PD, they came out and they asked them, do they know anything about the crimes that are happening? And unfortunately, they didn't really have a lot to give them. But they did say that if they had a license plate, that'd be really helpful to their investigation. And that HOA went online and they found that, tried to buy, buy an LPR, but they found about $27,000 to buy their own camera, get it installed, run power, run internet, the whole nine yards. And he was like, this is crazy. And he was actually an electrical engineer by trade and he built his own license plate reader. Stuck at the front of their subdivision. It was like one of those one-way in, one-way outs. Exact same crime happened a couple of weeks later. He went back to the camera, filtered out all the local residents, came back with two rogue plates, gave it to the PD. And they actually ended up solving, doing investigation, recovering some of the stolen items. And a light bulb went off, said, I think I got a business here. And he started selling these cameras right here to local HOAs and businesses throughout the southeast. And the company grew. And then the Sheriff's Department in Texas reached out and asked if he could buy some for the county himself. He had a couple of HOAs that had some. And he actually helped our company get hooked into the NCIC database, which is the federal database of all stolen vehicles, warrants, a couple of other items like that. And then they started picking up stolen vehicles and things along those lines. And the company expanded. And the big difference that Flock came, came to the table was, first of all, Art Gare, our CEO, he wasn't involved in police sales or license plate readers at all. And he built his camera using motion capture. So anytime something goes by here, it takes a bunch of pictures. And then he wrote some machine learning to decide what it was looking at. So before Flock came around, every license plate reading system used infrared light to hit a metal license plate and get that number back. So all you were getting was the, was the numbers on the license plate. But with this system, because we're getting a capture of the vehicle and getting the whole car, the machine learning can tell what type of vehicle is it? Is it a truck? Is it a car? Is it a van? What color is it? Is it green? Is it red? Is it blue? What is the make? Is it a Chrysler? Is it a Ford? Are there stickers on it? Is there a lift sticker? All these different items that police will use to identify a vehicle now can, can become filterable. So a witness no longer has to see a crime and be like, that license plate was XR43. They can say, I saw a red car leaving the scene with an Uber sticker on it. And the police will be able to go back to those images, pick the camera, pick the timeframe, and search for all the red Toyota cars with, with stickers in that 10 minutes. We'll get those returns. And then basically be able to build a lead off of that and then work the investigation with that evidence. So that's really at the heart of what, what the city is looking at when it comes with these, with these cameras. Am I, am I able to, to move the, oh, thank you. So, so first of all, the fact that Flock is the first company to be able to use that vehicle fingerprint has been really big. But number two is our cameras are infrastructure-free. So we don't actually need any existing city infrastructure or city power. Our cameras are solar-powered and the internet is built into the camera. So the department can just tell us where they're looking to put cameras and we can, and we will put the cameras there. Flock is a fully vertically-integrated company, which means we design the software and the hardware in Atlanta. We manufacture the cameras in South Carolina. I'm the sales rep. I live here in Illinois. I come down, sell you guys the cameras. The techs live in the St. Louis area, which would service you guys. The account manager also lives in the Chicagoland area, who will service you. So you're only dealing with one single company here. Any issues or any maintenance things, that is all Flock's responsibility. The city is not responsible for any maintenance of these cameras. And we actually don't actually sell this as a capital-intensive purchase. You're actually, actually just purchasing the information coming out of the cameras, not the camera itself. So Flock is responsible for installing the camera, make sure it's running. An issue happens with the camera, you're not out thousands of dollars on a hardware purchase. Flock just comes and either hangs a new camera or fixes it on our own. So this is, so we sell this as a service, not as a capital-intensive purchase. Does anyone have any questions before I keep going through here? Nope. I don't know what's going on in that picture in the middle there. But, so I would talk about us being able to see-legged detective. It's a really important part of Flock. Our ability to do wide-scale deployments, because we, we own all the hardware. We have a much lower price point compared to a lot of the other cameras in this, in this field. But third is our public-private partnership. So I mentioned before, we started by selling to HOAs and businesses. And that's actually still 55% of our business. More than half of all the cameras we sell are actually directly to the public. And any camera that an HOA or a business or, or any sort of community group purchases that goes into your jurisdiction, your city will get access to it for free. And we have a lot of cities here in Illinois that actually don't pay Flock assent. Places like Naperville and Plainfield and Northbrook don't actually pay Flock assent. They just access the cameras that HOAs or businesses have bought in their, in their, in their area. We also, because this is all kind of run through Flock, any of the surrounding jurisdictions that's also purchased Flock, if, think of it almost as a Facebook friend request. If your city requests to access their cameras, like Decatur has 60 of these, and they accept that, you'd be able to access those cameras just like they're your own. So being able to work with the surrounding communities that have these cameras in place to, to track different entities as they move around. Does anyone have any questions or anything I touched on?
Alderwoman Conley. Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm sorry. And I don't want to ask too many questions. Would you prefer we ask them at the end or?
Whatever you feel more comfortable with.
If you're good for, okay, so, so my first question is, are these installed already in Springfield? Do we have businesses that are part of the network?
No. We have not actively attempted to, to look to sell any groups down here. Because up until this point, Springfield PD wasn't, wasn't a client or wasn't accessing these cameras. And that's really where the majority of our private sales come from, when the community knows that the PD has access to these, will, will respond to them if a stolen vehicle enters their neighborhood, things like that. That's really a big selling point there.
So if we install these as a city, do our businesses get like a special rate as part of that or there's no reduction for them?
Everyone pays the same, the same amount. They're buying the same camera that you are.
But we're not actually buying the camera, right?
Or they're leasing the camera at the exact same, same rate whether, whether a business buys the camera or a, or a city buys the camera. We don't charge the cities more.
Okay, and then, so what other cities in Illinois have police departments that are using this technology? I mean, you said Decatur.
Yeah, Rantoul, Harvey, Wilkai Sheriff's Department, Joliet, Crest Hill, Shorewood, Frankfurt, Mokena, Moni, New Lennox, Lombard, South Barrington, Cary, McHenry County, Kendall County.
If you don't list them all, that's okay.
Okay, I was just.
And then is there storage capacity of these or like, let's say someone says, you know, they, they were gone for a week and they come home and they find that their car, their house was broken into? Can we go back and look a week at pictures?
Yeah. So every capture is stored on CIGIS-certified Amazon web servers. CIGIS-certified is a type of law enforcement certification. And so every capture that's made goes to the cloud. And then they're stored on these servers for 30 days. And we've worked with groups like the ACLU to design a more friendly LPR system where this is not a bulk collection of indefinitely, of indefinite data. After 30 days, if the, if the city or the police department has not saved an image, that image is purged and it's gone, gone. So after, after 30 days, this isn't something like you can go back years or anything like that with some other.
So our police department though has the ability to download the pictures and then we can save them independently from your servers?
Correct. So they, yes. So they stay, they stay up on these Amazon servers and then because you guys are already Axon clients, we have a direct integration with Axon, Evidence.com, which is where police departments stays all their evidence today. There is, it's a one-click integration directly to that case file. So we are directly connected there.
Thank you.
Alderman Donilon.
Being with you.
Chair, just one of a quick question. For a city our size, a lot of streets, a lot of intersections, how would you prioritize, recommend prioritizing the deployment of such a project?
Yeah, so there's really two, two schools of thought. One is a perimeter approach where you want to identify all the cars coming into town. Like, a lot of this depends on what your crime patterns are. Are you a town that your residents are involved in a lot of crime or is a crime client from the outside committing crimes and fleeing? So a lot of people put them on their entrances off their highways, really thick thoroughfares, or a hotspot approach, where you have an area that you are looking to reduce crime in. This is actually the approach Decatur took, where they basically attempt to lock down an area that's seen a spike in shootings or something like that. And so there's a little bit of give and take there. We have a whole department that are ex-law enforcement that will work with your department to identify kind of what their priorities are and work with you to, to, to kind of build out a deployment. And that's all part of the service. There's no like add-on cost or anything like that. One other, just a point real quick on, on kind of the civil liberties front. Also, just as a side, we are, Flock as a company does not own the data that's being captured here. The city of Springfield does. So this isn't also, and there is no reselling this data, period. So this isn't something like where we're monetizing your citizens. Every capture is only there for 30 days unless law enforcement deems it necessary for an investigation. And the city of Springfield owns the data, so we are, there is no reselling it to analytics companies or real estate or anything like that.
So let's, let's do this. Go ahead and finish your presentation, then, then I want to go Williams, Alderman Williams, Alderman Proctor, then back to Conley and we can finish up.
Great. So these are the three core deployments here. One, most popular and the one that we've discussed a lot with the city so far is on an existing pole that you guys own. We can either tap into city power, these draw about $5 with the power a year, or we can, or it can be done with solar power. This is all part of a normal deployment, no additional cost for any one of these three. Number two, we can hang on an existing pole where we, you can't really see the camera because it's a little small picture there, but there's a camera on that wooden pole. We're tapping into city power. Or three, we can drop our own IDOT and DOT-approved 12-foot breakaway flock poles in the ground. Once, once that pole goes in the ground, the city owns that pole and can put any additional signage out that you want. Even if you leave Flock, you, you get to keep the poles. You want to go to the next slide? Thank you. As far as prices is concerned, again, we are not, this is not a capital-intensive purchase. This is a subscription model and it is $2,500 per camera a year. Doesn't matter if you're an HOA that gets one camera or you're a city that gets 250 cameras. They're $2,500 and that includes everything. So this doesn't look like, like a cable bill where you're paying something for cellular, something for integrations, X, 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 Y, Z. You get a bill once a year. Let's say you get 100 cameras, you get a bill once a year for $250,000. And then there's a one-time install fee of $250 per camera. But that actually rolls off after the first year. But other than that, the city should not see any additional charges from Flock, period. Yep, I believe that's.
Alright, Alderman Williams?
Yes. So as, in the neighborhood, I'm a Neighborhood Association president and we, we talk cameras all the time. So is there anything like, as a resident, I can opt out and be put on a safety list to where my images could be kept or used and things like that?
Yes. That is up, the technology is there to do our, our safe list. That is up to yours, the city or the department to decide who can go on those lists, but absolutely the technology's there for that.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Proctor.
No, that answered my question.
Good. And Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Chair. So if there's an installation fee, can we move these?
There is a $250 fee for us to come out and move a camera. So it's the kind of same, we have to come out and put another hole in the ground, drop another pole. So there's a $250 fee for that.
If we weren't dropping a pole, what if we wanted to connect it? I'm just worried people are going to figure out where these are and not take those roads. I mean, what sort of, I guess, so if you're, this camera's up on the light post pole at the end of my street, does it see just that intersection? I mean, is there, does it move?
So these are facing in, into a roadway and capturing traffic as it flows. So, and frankly, these don't necessarily, they're pretty inconspicuous, honestly. Like if you know they're there, then yeah, you know they're there. But like, it's not necessarily something where it's like a criminal's driving through and is like, that looks, that looks like a camera type thing. But yes, it is $250 for us to, to move a camera.
So regardless of whether you put in a pole or.
Yes.
Okay. Now, what do you tell you? Thank you for answering my other question about who owns the data. So appreciate that.
Alderwoman Desenzo.
Thank you, Chair. Do you have any idea how many cameras the city of Springfield or the Springfield Police Department is planning on purchasing or looking at purchasing?
I mean, I, there's been a lot of numbers thrown out. I wouldn't want to speak for the department because they haven't, they haven't told me.
Because we know that the city of Decatur just purchased 60, you know, you've been following the news. So I, I have some concerns with these cameras because I have constituents that call all the time with cars speeding down the road and they get license plates and the police say, there's nothing we can do about it because we didn't see it. So I'm just a little, you know, we have the ShotSpotter technology that we've paid a lot of money for. And so now we're talking about cameras and it just, I'm not sure how I feel about it. No offense to your company.
No, absolutely not. I mean, it is a, a step forward in police technology. And I mean, something like ShotSpotter, like these cameras are a type of technology that can work very much in hand with a ShotSight. So like, it understands there are gunshots. At the exact same time, you can go back and filter what were all the cars that got into that area in that nested timeframe? Or what are the ones that are leaving right afterwards? Or someone says, there was a, there was a black Charger that sped out of that real fast. Okay? How many black Chargers did we see kind of going down that, that road three minutes later? So like, being able to connect the piece of technology that you guys have in place today with these are kind of how all that, how all that kind of ties together.
Thank you. You want to answer some questions, any of these, or you want to wait for Chief to get back?
Yes, sir.
No, I'm not like either.
Alderman Desenzo, to answer your question on the total number of cameras we're looking at, we're still working with the company on that, somewhere around probably 80. We're doing a little bit wider deployment than what Decatur's doing citywide. Crime reduction is the plan on that. Final numbers aren't in, but that's something we're working on right now.
So it would be something that's citywide?
Yes, yes.
Anyone else?
Officer, could you give, could you give your name and your position? Commander Dodd.
Anyone else? Alrighty, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Alrighty, next we have the ordinance table that are remaining in the committee. Mr. Clark, could you please read those ordinances?
2020-464, 2021-193.
Is there any action on any of these ordinance here?
Mr. Chair, could we discuss 2020-190, 2021-193, the casino idea? We've got some speakers that came tonight to, to wish to offer their views on that.
I would definitely accept a motion to talk about, discussion. Are you asking for a motion to discuss it or pull it out or?
Yeah, we've got a pastor here and some others that wish to talk about it.
Yeah, a second.
Go ahead.
Mr. Clark, could you give the names of those that are here to talk about the casino ordinance?
Pastor Trey, if you'd like to come up.
Pastor Trajan McGill and there's some others that are here also that wish to talk about it that aren't necessarily pastors.
Good evening. My name is Trajan McGill and I am a resident of Rochester and a minister at a large Presbyterian church located in Springfield's Ward Number Five. I understand we are considering whether a casino might be added for the good of this city. And as one whose profession gives regular thought to what constitutes the good, I have a few thoughts on this. The first thing I would like us to consider is that gambling is an odd place for us to rest our hopes for growth. When gambling is just about the one industry we can accurately describe as totally economically unproductive. It does not produce anything or create anything or add anything new to the economy. A factory, a restaurant, a farm, a building contractor, a software development firm, or any other number of businesses take resources and labor and construct something that didn't exist before, actually increasing the total amount of wealth in the economy. A casino does not create a single dollar of new value. It simply shuffles existing wealth from one set of hands to another, which rules it out immediately as an engine for true economic growth, but we still might do well to ask, which hands? Do we at least shuffle dollars into better places? Here's what I have to say to that. In a time where we have become ever more aware of the problems of concentrated wealth, it seems to me peculiar that we would aim to relieve our economic problems by opening up a venture whose entire business model is literally to take wealth from the many and redistribute it to the hands of just a few, while skimming the majority of it away altogether. And who are the many whose funds will be taken? We must look at this through a realistic lens. People are not going to travel from across the nation to gamble in Springfield, Illinois, or even across our own state. They won't come from the St. Louis metro area because there's already a casino in Alton. They won't even come from Peoria because they've got one right next door already too. Two groups of patrons will spend their time in a Springfield casino. One is people traveling here for some other reason, government, medicine, or education perhaps. Those people are going to look around for something to do at the end of the day. And our question should be, do we want them spending their visitor dollars at restaurants, entertainment venues, and attractions owned and run by Springfield-area business persons? Do we want them spending their time and money on the cultural and historical sites unique to us here? Or would we prefer they bypass all the native Springfield businesses and spend their money at an establishment owned by some out-of-state investment group that funnels most of those profits elsewhere? But the vast majority of people who will spend their time there are the people of Springfield, Taylorville, Sherman, all of this county and its immediate neighbors. And when we siphon cash from the pockets of our own communities, this isn't a net gain, especially when sending a large portion of it off to far-off owners. This resolution has the stated purpose of providing downtown economic development and job creation, but I don't see how. A casino that doesn't draw any real new tourism to town does not add to the revenues of other nearby businesses. It competes with them. Except for parking garages and prostitutes, this won't help downtown businesses. It will serve as a replacement for them, dominating the local menu with some Las Vegas corporations-eyed version of a horseshoe sandwich. Nor will it help the residents. As I pointed out, we're not going to fill a Springfield casino with movie stars and rich Wall Street bankers. It's going to be locals keeping this afloat. Now, I don't know if you've ever looked at a map of where lottery tickets are sold, but I have and it is illuminating. The highest sales are reliably in the lowest-income zip codes. This shouldn't surprise us. People who are the most stuck economically in the system we've got are the ones who most need a lucky break in life. We don't make the system better for them when we allow flashy operators to come in and feed them constant promises of lucky breaks after just one more pull of the slot machine lever, in order to extract from them some more of what little they've already got. In other words, this is not the helpful path it claims to be. It's not free money for the community. It's money from the community and it comes at a cost. The cost of making the success of our economy dependent on persuading people to make economic decisions they cannot afford, while tearing away business from our own local entrepreneurs and producers. I urge you to vote no and resist the temptation to set our city's hopes on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Mr. Chair, there's two others that wish to speak. There's Mr. Herron and Ms. Anita Bedell, I believe, wish to speak.
Thank you, Alderman McMiniman. I will, I will say, is, is there anyone that's going to motion to take this out tonight?
No.
No.
So, you know, I, I know.
I didn't know they would come here tonight, Mr. Chair, but since they're here, I thought they should get the opportunity.
Mr. Chair, actually, there are three more.
If this does come out in the future, are they going to come back and then go through the same motions? I, I mean, this, we're not acting on it. I mean, I can appreciate them wanting to come up and talk and, and they're certainly welcome to, but, but, you know, if this comes out in a couple of weeks or whatever, they'll be back at the council meeting, you know. Maybe we should take it to a vote tonight then, if we can.
We're not voting on anything, sir. It's a committee of the whole meeting. We're not voting on anything.
Well, to put it on either debate or, or the consent agenda. If you, if you have the votes for it.
So I, I know there's some people. So I know there's some people that are here that want to speak on this. I really would like, and I think, you know, I agree with Autobahn Hanauer that everybody just comes back when we pull this out. I don't even think that we know where we're going to be at on this. And so we all can discuss this at once.
Sure.
Autobahn McWilliams. Yes, so when the annexation was going on, we had this exact same situation. We had folks come weeks before on the wrong day, but they got to speak. I just want to say that. Go ahead, sir. Go ahead.
Mr. Clerk, put five minutes on there for him.
Okay.
My name is David Heron. I live in Springfield on Brendan Shaw Drive. I'm a psychiatric social worker, retired, and an Army veteran. I just wanted to talk to you briefly tonight against further significant expansion of gambling in the form of a casino. Gambling has invaded Springfield in the form of video gaming. And it's grown like wild weeds to over 680 gaming devices in our city, more than anywhere in the state. About the only place there isn't a video gaming machine is in the phone booth, and we all know why that's true. As I understand it, we haven't been able to properly monitor this explosion to assure all that are living up to the requirements. It's gotten kind of away from us. Research on gambling shows gambling has done some very, has some very high cost to society that hosts it. Most of these costs derive from two groups, problem and pathological gamblers. Some of these problems include crime, aggravated assault, rape, robbery, larceny, burglary, auto theft, embezzlement, and fraud, to name a few. Also bankruptcy, suicide, illness, social service costs, that's treatment, unemployment, and other social service costs. Family costs, divorce, separation, child abuse and neglect, and domestic violence. Gambling attracts clientele usually unequally rather, as a 10% of the gamblers account for about 2/3 to 4/5 of the wagering. I have made copies for the council of information from gambling economics, a summary of facts, which I'll be happy to leave here. And it's an information sheet that discusses the many issues surrounding gambling economics. I would ask you to consider the impact that it might have on Springfield. Springfield is a city we should be proud of. The fact is, it's the capital city of Illinois. It is known primarily as the home of Abraham Lincoln. We have a marvelous facility in the Abraham Lincoln Presidential Library and Museum. Thousands of schoolchildren have visited and well over 5 million people have been through the museum and library in just 15 years. We also are blessed to have President Lincoln's home as well as his final resting place. These are priceless legacies to this community. In closing, I don't believe that a gambling casino blends harmoniously with this community's character. And its position or reputation and reputation in our great state. Please do not intermingle a gambling house within our great city. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
And who may I give these to?
Anita Bedell. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, I'm Anita Bedell, the Executive Director of Illinois Church Action on Alcohol and Addiction Problems. And we've been opposing a downtown casino since 1993. We've worked with churches and grassroots activists to put a referendum on the ballot in Sangamon County in 1994. And asked for a vote of the people before gambling was expanded in the city. And the referendum was approved by 90% of the voters. Two years ago, there was a headline in the State Journal Register that read, "Langfelder Seeks Emergency Passage of the Casino Resolution." At that time, there was a massive gambling expansion bill before the General Assembly. Excuse me, and it included six land-based casinos, including one for Danville in Chicago, casinos at racetracks, but no casino for Springfield. These casinos are still in the process of getting licensed and none have been opened. Right now, the legislature is considering internet gambling, sports gambling, and many other forms of gambling, but no additional casinos. As the pastor said, these will be regional casinos where local and area residents can gamble 24 hours a day, seven days a week, nonstop, thanks to a provision in the 2019 law. There are gamblers who will gamble between two and three days nonstop when they are at these casinos. So it's a very hard thing to have in this area. Area residents can already have more than enough opportunities to gamble. As the previous speaker said, there are 689 video gambling machines in the city of Springfield. And that's about the same number of slot machines that they have at the Grand Victoria Casino in Elgin. However, the machines are scattered throughout the city at 130 establishments. In April, area residents lost $4.7 million in the video gambling machines in Springfield. That's one month, 4.7 million. And since the video gambling was legalized in Springfield, area residents have lost $224 million in the city in these gambling machines. A casino is not like any other business. There would be little concern about gambling in the state if it were not for the social problems and costs. Addiction, bankruptcy, and many other problems are associated with pathological gambling. Studies have found that bankruptcy increases in communities with gambling. The rate of pathological gambling is higher among minorities and low-income individuals. The presence of a gambling casino within 10 miles doubles the prevalence of problem and pathological gamblers. And crime increases 8% to 9% the third year after casino facilities are open, and crime continues to increase thereafter. So with all the problems that casino gambling brings, we just ask that you reject the resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Trajan? Trajan?
He was the first speaker, Mr. Clerk.
All right, yeah, that's it. Thank you to everyone who came to speak on this and I'm sure this council will consider it. Thank you. It is now time for the ordinance for committee consideration. Mr. Clerk, could you please read those ordinances for CWP?
Will do. CWP, 2021-196, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UW 22-03-07. Four trucks for CWP Lake Services with Landmark Ford Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $130,249 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? I've been trying to make sure I got that in there. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Eyes have it.
2021-197, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UW 22-03-05. Riprap materials with Ayers Construction Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $191,182 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Discussion, seeing no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Eyes have it.
2021-198, an ordinance accepting the bid and authorizing execution of contract UE 21-02-72. CWP FY 22 Electric Underground Electric Rebuild with Aspenland Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $1,109,415 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent. Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Autobahn Redpath.
Director Brown, is this the same company that does our line trimming?
No, the tree trimming is done by Wright.
Okay. It used to be these guys?
Aspen does have an arm that does tree trimming.
Okay.
And they've done it, it's been a long time ago, but yeah.
Thank you.
Actually, Director.
Autobahn Conley.
I just. So I understand this is going to reduce outages in an area that's pretty predominantly in Ward Eight?
Yeah, it's, let's see here, it's basically the areas of Passville Park and Monroe Park West. Kind of located between Gaylord Avenue, Astoria Road, Norwalk Road, Washington Street, and Durkin Drive. The Park West, the Monroe Park West area is by Old Jacksonville Road, Veterans Parkway, Lawrence Avenue, and Wakefield Drive.
Yes, so how many outages has that area had and how much do you think that's going to reduce these by? Do you know?
I don't have that information.
You just maybe email me later.
Okay, sure.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
None opposed? Eyes have it.
2021-199, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE 22-03-06. Fiber optic cable with power line supply incorporated in an amount not to exceed $180,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? Eyes have it.
2021-200, an ordinance approving amendment number three for a five-year contract extension and authorizing additional funds in the amount of $125,000. With Panhalec Eastern Popline Company LP for natural gas parking charges for the interstate combustion turbine for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? No opposed? Eyes have it.
2021-201, an ordinance approving and authorizing execution of a lease agreement for 9150 Wall Road, Ponte and Illinois. Lease number 1105 for a one-year term for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? No opposed? Eyes have it.
2021-202, an ordinance authorizing the reallocation of existing budget authority for fiscal year 2021 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for debate.
It's been moved in second for debate. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, could we have an explanation of what's happening here and what amounts are moving from what line to what line?
Absolutely. Here comes the man.
Trying to look the information up here. This, some minor things, I believe. Oh, here it is. It's for $1,500, going from Fund 101, Department 300, Organization KBA. Activity 6360, object code 1221. To fund what?
If they're minor amounts, we can pass on. I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yeah, it's $1,500 and $750. This is an accounting thing.
Chairman, I move my motion for consent.
Second.
It's been moved in second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? No opposed? Eyes have it.
Public Works, 2021-204, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Gary Whitehorn and Christina M. Whitehorn for the purchase of real estate located 1122 North 10th Street in an amount not to exceed $37,611.72 cents relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project, Usable Segment 6 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved in second for consent. Any discussion on this? Seeing no discussion. All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
No opposed? Eyes have it.
2021-205, an ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Illinois Department of Transportation for the maintenance and apportionment of energy costs for the traffic signals and traffic control devices located on state highways within or near the city of Springfield for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved in second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion. All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
None opposed? Eyes have it.
2021-206, an ordinance authorizing relocation expenses in the amount of $11,450 for the relocation of personal property located on parcel SR 0080 located at 1,009 North 10th Street relating to the Usable Segment 6 of the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and consented for, it's been moved in second for consent. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
No opposed.
2021-207, an ordinance authorizing relocation expenses in the amount of $22,650.84 for relocation of personal property located on parcel SR 0063 located 1132 North 10th Street relating to the Usable Segment 6 of the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved in second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion. All in favor?
All right.
None opposed? Eyes have it.
2021-208, an ordinance authorizing relocation expenses in the amount of $17,450 for the relocation of personal property located in parcel SR 0057 located at 1,006 East North Grand Avenue relating to the Usable Segment 6 of the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved in second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion. All in favor?
All right.
None opposed? Eyes have it.
2021-214, an ordinance approving intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Sangamon County and Sangamon Mass Transit District regarding the construction of the east side of the Springfield-Sangamon County Transportation Center containing the bus transfer facility.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved in second for consent. Any discussion on this matter? Seeing no discussion. All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
None opposed? Eyes have it.
General City Business, 2021-209, an ordinance authorizing an inter-fund transfer of FY 2022 SHA Madison Park Place funds from the account, from one account to another in the amount of $100,000 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Move for consent, but discussion. Second.
Autobahn Redpath.
Can you tell me, is this, each time we do this, Corporation Council, is this going to be, come in this type of ordinance for, and is it specific expenditures that we're using it for?
This is, this is just a transfer among the budget line items, but any expenditure of this comes back to the council. And I think this is actually related in part to the study for possible changing the boundary, so there's going to be a follow-on ordinance with PTVA.
You answered my question by saying it's going to come back to the council.
That is correct. Now, this is just among the budget, but the expenditures come back.
Thank you.
All right. Further clarification?
Autobahn McMenamin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is this referring to the SHA Madison Park Place TIF? Okay, the word TIF wasn't in there. Okay. And so we're moving it from one account to another account within the TIF fund, is that correct? Yes, that is correct. Thank you.
I just got one thing. So, so are we, do we know what we're going to spend this on? Is this for a study, study to do?
There will be a follow-on ordinance this next time for first reading that will fund the study for possible expanding the boundary of the SHA, the existing, to expand the boundary for the SHA TIF area.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion. It's been moved in second for consent. All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
None opposed? Eyes have it.
2021-210, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract with the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois for Fire Protection Services from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
Move for consent.
It's been moved in second for consent. Any discussion on this matter?
Yeah, sure.
Autobahn Conley.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just wondering, this is a 3% increase in this contract? So obviously, we've made some major cuts to the fire department's budget this year. I was just wondering if this 3% increase is reflecting just general inflation?
Honestly, I can't tell you why there's a 3% increase other than, unless it's just a routine amount. But this is a contract that we do annually.
No, I know. And I will tell you, I've had, I've had a number of people reach out to me who are, first of all, they're upset at the cuts for the fire department. But their other question was, you know, should we maybe, if we have to make these cuts to our department, should we be charging more to the places than the different groups and different townships or whatever?
Protection districts.
That require protection. Yeah, so I don't know if that was.
So I know that those agreements are set with corporate council and they write a, you know, a contract annually with these people and.
Sure.
But I can't tell you why there's a 3% increase.
Could we?
Just briefly, I believe that is what the statute allows. That's the maximum. Each year, the, in all of those fire protection district contracts, it's typically 3% because that's what the, that's what the statute allows to be increased. However, I think the studies generally show that the amounts that are actually collected actually don't cover the. the amounts that are actually collected actually don't cover the total cost, you know, of providing those services. So there's actually, in the past, has been some effort to actually get larger increases because of the negative position, because the cost of fire trucks, cost of, you know, things are so high. And this particular contract, I think, has been in place for probably thirty, forty years, thirty years.
Correct, yes.
Well, I just, I guess maybe if it's been in place for that many years, are we examining it to make sure that we are actually recouping our costs?
There, there are limits on how much we can charge.
Three percent.
There are limits on how much we can charge.
Okay, so this is a statutory limit?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
On, on the increases, annual increases.
But, uh, but you just said we can collect, though, if we're not, if what we're charging doesn't cover our costs.
No, I said that the, uh, the, the amounts that we are charging don't cover the cost of the actual, you know, the cost of the coverage that's being provided.
So that, I guess that's, that's my question then. Um, are we sure that we're recouping the costs of our actual coverage when we review all of these contracts?
I think I, that's probably more directed perhaps to the fire department. I think they looked at that before.
And that's, I can wait and talk to, to Chief Blough, um, later, but, um, could I respectfully ask that, that this go on debate agenda for next week? Thank you.
Uh, I'm gonna go Alderman Donlin, then Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not to belabor the point, but my understanding is like this is the contracts with the University of Illinois Springfield, uh, of course, the University of Illinois Springfield isn't a taxing district, but levies a real estate tax. There are several, I believe, nine other agreements.
Nine others, yes, yes.
Fire protection districts that surround the areas of Springfield.
Yeah, that's correct.
And, uh, those agreements are, uh, as the, as the council, uh, indicated, there is a rate limitation. And I would like the information to see where we, where those districts are as far as their rate limitation, because as, as been alluded to this evening, we all know that the Austin is under private, this is the service, the citizens, uh, gas goes up, wages go up, wages go up and so forth. But it'd be interesting to see what the, where we are as far as the, where, excuse me, where the fire protection districts are as far as what they're actually taxing the residents, because as the council alluded to, uh, we haven't made people, it's not what used to be, I can't believe it's changed.
I'll make a note of it and talk to Chief Blough upon his return and we'll get that information to you. Yeah, we have the nine fire protection, UIS, uh, state fairgrounds, or, yeah, state fairgrounds as well, so.
This one is different.
This one is different because it's not...
It's not an entity that has real estate taxes.
Yeah. Thank you.
I will just say, um, Alderman Donlin, thank you for clarifying my, my concerns. I appreciate that.
Alderman Hanauer.
We can leave this one on consent, that's fine, if you want.
If you didn't, if you didn't get the answer you wanted, we can put it on debate, I don't care.
Let's, let's put it on, okay, I would, thank you very much. And I, thank you for coming up, I appreciate it.
No problem, thank you.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I guess, uh, this is, this goes over all the, all the different contracts we have. Obviously, we're not, they're, they're, they don't pay for the amount of service that we, we provide them. Are we required, are we required to provide both fire protection?
Yep.
And medical? Or is, is it something that medical could get stripped out and we charge more for medical? Uh, you know, I know you don't like, you know, you don't like doing that, but if we're getting to the point where, you know, we, we, we had to make some, some decisions, um, we should be recouping our costs. These people are not paying the same thing that the city of Springfield residents are, are paying. So if, we need to look at this, and if the state, if, if, if this is something that we can, we, we charge more for, for that, it's something we need to look at. I, I, you know, and it's just not fair to the, to the city, uh, people living in the city that they're paying, I, I'll just say, you know, a thousand dollars a person, and these guys are getting away with paying, you know, three hundred dollars a person, or, or, you know, whatever, I don't know, I, I don't know the numbers, but my question, I guess, would be, does that have to include medical as well? Because if it isn't, maybe we need to start charging?
Um, we can take a look at the statute and see the fire protection statute and see exactly what services are contemplated.
Yeah, thank you.
Happy to do it.
Corporation Council, don't we have an obligation statutorily to, uh, that we have to cover the districts? Uh, and that's why the statute, uh, makes a maximum of three percent increases?
There are some, uh, mutual aid arrangements, agreements that are in place. Uh, however, I'll take a look at that and we can have some more information about it. The fire protection districts are there to, uh, basically provide the, for, being able to contract for fire protection without having to create their own department. And the creation of the department, of course, is very expensive. You know, a single fire truck can be, you know, five hundred thousand dollars or, or more, so, uh, but we, I'll take a look at the statute and I'll try to give some information to you.
It's a very good point, though, the Alderman bringing up that we need to check those numbers to see where we are and see, see if we're covering our costs.
I, I know the department has looked at that, I mean, the fire department has looked at that on more than one occasion.
Thank you.
Let me go, uh, Alderman Ferginzi, then we'll go to, uh, Mayor Lanfert.
Is there any, have we ever looked at, uh, can we bill Medicare for the, uh, the, medical portion? Uh, on the medical calls, can we bill Medicare?
The, it is my understanding that, that's an issue that, uh, I think the fire department, the, uh, chief has been actually looking into the issue about, uh, provision for, uh, ambulance transportation-type services. It is my understanding that under those existing rules, that the city, although it does provide medical services, is not allowed to charge for those services through Medicare or Medicaid, uh, because they do not transport. So the ambulance companies, the private companies that transport, uh, end up charging for those services that are being rendered, uh, you know, in a fairly complex formula, but that's, uh, actually being talked about. And I know the chief has spent some time, uh, looking at that issue. But we're not allowed, because we do not transport, we're not allowed to make a charge for medical service under those regulations.
Mayor Lanfert.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Uh, we are in, uh, the middle of discussions with regards to the fire station out the fairgrounds and Chief Blough is looking at the actual cost because, uh, I think Alderman Hanauer hit the nail on the head as well as, uh, Alderman Conley and, uh, Donlin with regards to what it costs us. It's just not, you know, most people think of the equipment, the staffing, pension should be figured into that and everything else, uh, because, uh, we have to calculate what it costs us per capita and then those that serve outside the realm. And so, uh, we'll take a legislative change because we are capped at that. So that's something that, I know this goes back to, uh, Chief Helmerx, and it's something that we'll have to rely on everybody to make that push through the legislature, through IML, and ourselves individually to, uh, make that change. But we have to justify it with regards to, uh, what it actually costs to deliver those services to citizens of Springfield, but those, uh, in the other fire districts. But the, where you are going through the negotiations right now, and just give a little historical point with regards to fairgrounds, when they didn't have a budget, you know, for two years, we reduced the amount that we were getting. So, uh, you know, that's one area that we are going to have a talk to them about because the station is within the fairgrounds, it's not city property, it's the state's property. And so, uh, we can better position that fire station. Uh, so that's one of the things we're looking at, you know, how do you provide better coverage? Uh, does it make sense to retain that? You can have a subs, sub-recipient agreement during the fair or some activities, uh, with regards to that, and maybe we'd be better off locating elsewhere. But those are all discussions that Chief Blough is currently having with the state on that piece. But, uh, we'll look at all the rest of it as we move forward.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing no discussion, seeing no other discussion. Uh, the motion for debate has been rescinded, so I have a motion for consent by Alderman Redpath. Do I have a second?
Well, I thought we were going to keep it on debate.
Are we gonna keep it on debate?
Okay.
Actually, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Alderman, uh, Donlin made the motion.
Okay.
And, uh, Alderman does so seconded it.
Okay. All right, debate is fine, all right. So I got a motion and a second for debate. All in, uh, in, any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed? Eyes have it.
Twenty twenty-one, two eleven, an ordinance approving the appointment of Stella Dean to the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission.
Move for debate, second.
Second.
Been moved in second for debate. Any discussion? No, seeing no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? Eyes have it.
Chair, Chair.
I'm sorry.
Who we want to invite Stella to come up?
I'm sorry, Ms. Dean. Would you like to come up?
Mayor, I just want to thank you for this opportunity and having enough faith that I will add a positive value to this commission. And I want to thank all of you, Alderpersons, many of you I've spoken to several times, and I appreciate this opportunity.
Ms. Dean, have you ever served on a commission before?
Yes.
Are you on a commission now?
Uh, no, in, uh, one of my previous employments, I worked for the Petroleum Storage Tank Commission in Kentucky as an employee.
I'm in a Springfield commission.
No, sir, not in Springfield.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's go on.
Congratulations. All right, sorry about that, Ms. Dean. All right, uh, Mr. Clark?
Twenty twenty-one, two twelve, an ordinance authorizing an increase in the number of Class D liquor licenses by one for Biscuits and Brunch Incorporated, doing business as Bixis, Biscuits and Brunch Incorporated, located at two, twenty-six, sixty-one Chatham Road.
A move to consent?
Second.
Move, a motion in, uh, second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Eyes have it.
Noted. Twenty twenty-one, two thirteen, an ordinance to increase the number of Class A liquor licenses by one for the Pasta Boys Incorporated, doing business as Goodfellas Pub, for the business located at two thousand Peory Road.
Move for consent.
Second.
Been moved in second for consent. Any discussions? Yes, sir.
Uh, we will pass out a correction.
That's correct. And, and we will make it with the chair's permission, we'll make that correction, it's just a, uh, was just a typo. So it'll be, uh, it should reflect the five eighteen instead of the two thousand, and we have made that, uh, correction.
All right, thank you, sir, Corporation Council.
So it's not on Peory Road either?
All right, it's been moved in second.
Just clarifying.
For consent. Uh, any discussion? Seeing no, no other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed?
Noted.
Eyes have it.
Twenty twenty-one, two fifteen, an ordinance to appoint William Louie to the Civil Service Commission.
Move to debate?
Second.
Been moved in second for debate. Any discussion on this matter?
Is he, is Mr. Louie here?
It looks like he is.
Could you stand up, please? Could you turn around? No, I'm just... Billy and I were in the Air Force together.
Anyone else want to go now, memory lane?
Do we want to let, do we want to let Mr. Louie come up and say hello?
Yes, sir.
Shout out.
Appreciate that, Alderman Redpath. Um, thank you all for the opportunity to serve. I really don't have anything else to add or didn't prepare anything, but I'll certainly answer any questions.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to say, um, Bill, we served on the school board together and, um, you have always done your very best for the city, so I appreciate you stepping up on this one.
I appreciate it. I appreciate being asked. Thank you.
And Bill and I are distant cousins, so.
That is accurate.
Be y'all.
I think school, school board trumps.
I thought everybody was in Springfield, so.
Hey, Bill, I want to thank you for getting me out of that mess in nineteen eighty up in Wisconsin.
Long time ago, long time.
All right, uh, it's been moved in second for debate. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Eyes have it.
Twenty twenty-one, two sixteen, an ordinance to appoint Sue Day to the Civil Service Commission.
Second.
It's been moved in second for debate. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Eyes have it.
Twenty twenty-one, two seventeen, an ordinance authorizing increase of the number of Class D liquor licenses by one for the TKE One Lounge LLC, doing business as TKE One Lounge, located at seventeen oh-one J. David Jones Parkway.
Mr. Chair, that ordinance should not be filed.
Uh, we, we elected to hold this, am I correct?
Well, I think it shouldn't be on the agenda at all, because...
You're exactly correct. I believe that the motion at the time was at, when we, uh, this was one, it was a, a group that came that I think, uh, the request was made to add it to the agenda, uh, to suspend the rules and add it, and I believe this was excluded. So this would wait till the next, yes. So no action, uh...
Well, it shouldn't exist, right?
Correct. In other words, it, it should not be on the agenda. If you want to say withdraw it, it's fine, but technically, you never added it Tuesday night.
It does not exist.
Yes, sir. You're exactly correct.
Mr. Clark, Mr. Clark, will you proceed?
Twenty twenty-one, two eighteen, an ordinance to increase in the number of Class A A liquor licenses by one for Whiskey Jack's Sports Bar LLC, doing business as Whiskey Jack's, for the business located at four thirty East Monroe.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved in, seconded for consent. Any discussion on this matter? Seeing no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Present.
Noted.
None opposed? Eyes have it. Any unfinished business?
Yes.
Alderman, uh, Alderwoman, can start this in though.
Thank you, Chair.
Yes.
Uh, two things really quick. Um, we passed some, uh, buyouts about six weeks ago, and those buyouts are still waiting for their money. I emailed the mayor and Corporation Council today. So, uh, for the Newber and Sharbinski properties, they're, they're ready to move on. Um, second, I spent about two weeks trying to get an alley cleaned up. Waste Management was refusing to pick up trash out of an alley. It was impassable by the residents. Um, over in Harvard Park, this is completely unacceptable. We have an ordinance in place, it's not being enforced. Um, no offense, but we shouldn't have to spend our time on these issues because we have bigger fish to fry, and this is garbage, literally and figuratively. So, um, we need to start enforcing our ordinances, especially when it comes to trash, uh, especially this time of year when it starts getting hot and it smells and there's rodents. Um, it, it took a lot of effort to get something that's supposed to happen to actually happen. And I know we've all dealt with this. It's extremely frustrating, um, not just for me, but especially for the residents that live there. So we need to do a better job of enforcing our own ordinances.
No, I, I definitely agree. Anyone, anyone else? Uh, Alderman Proctor?
Well, just, uh, on that note, uh, is there any update on the ordinance that, uh, fly dumping, you get your car repossessed, or?
Um, yeah, I think it'll be ready, I think, on Friday.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep. And there's, there's actually three or four others, I think, that are in the same process, so.
They might have a lot more than a truck fly dumping. Alderman Conley.
Thank you. Um, on, on the note of ordinance, our unfinished business and our ordinances, I just want to point out, um, around the horseshoe, most of us do not have masks on. Um, and that, um, Mayor, my understanding is, um, anyone who has had both of their COVID shots, um, we can be, I mean, I, I have no problems, I'm a Moderna girl, um, we can be in council chambers without our masks on. And I would just like, maybe we could amend some of the signage. Um, the sign right now says you have to wear a mask, maybe, um, just clarify if you haven't had a vaccine, um, because I know there were some people in the audience who also had masks on but have had vaccines, so. Um, and also, get your shots. They're still available, very easily, very readily available.
Alderman Redpath. Alderman Redpath.
Corporation Council, about three to four weeks ago, we passed a liquor license for five-star liquor on Toronto Road. Can you tell me what the status is that they have not gotten their license?
Well, is that the, I'll have to actually check on it, is that the one with the zoning change that occurred, that they were going to then apply for the license for the tavern? I'll have to check on that. I'll let you know.
Please.
That's for five-star?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the other thing is, are we done with the plumber's contract? Is that coming to us soon, or?
It'll be on first reading.
Okay.
Friday, yeah.
All right.
Go ahead, Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, along with that, we all received a letter from the, from the, the heavy machinery operators, the operators local, saying that that negotiation, it's, what, a year and a half or something old, and they were kind of wanting to get it moved along. Mr. Zirkel, I know that you're doing your best...
Yeah, I don't want to get into discussions on specific ones, but that particular letter referred to the, there was a not, there was not a scheduled meeting, there was a question about the exact schedule, that's what that letter was about. It was really kind of contrivance on the part of their attorney. But again, I don't want to, you know, get too deep into the weeds on the, you know, specific items, but I'd be happy to talk to you, you know, individually about it.
Right, and, I mean, and Jim, I know that you're busy, and you've had people leave and that, and we've said it before, that, you know, it may be time to go get a contract out there with a legal firm to help move things along.
And I think that we'll have to, we'll have to assess that. In that particular case, that's actually being handled, that particular contract's being handled by one of the staff people, you know, my office, and it's a relatively simple issue, but the, I think the primary dispute is in the area of wages.
No, I'm not talking about just for, just for that, I'm talking about overall. I mean, you're inundated, and I can appreciate that, and it, you know, and we, you're short attorneys and that, and that's what we have contracts, you know, contract...
Oh, no, we'll take a look at that, sure.
And I think that, you know, Mayor, if you can look into that a little bit more, too, because the stress has got to be incredible, and...
Help guy out, Mayor.
We're fine.
Help them out, yeah. Yep, so thank you.
I think the stress works the other way.
Excuse me. You got to go, bop, bop. Anyone else? I do have one short item. On our tree contractors, we have had some residents, they're going to send me some information, but I did stop by their house where we did cut the limbs around the lines, but we left the stumps at some of them, so I'll send those to you so we can figure out how we get those. And also, there's been a couple of trees that have been identified that we trimmed, and they sort of just, you know, not a tree no more, so to speak. So I have asked for those examples, I did go by and see, you know, where we left those logs in the back, and I didn't think that would be proper, but I just wanted to check with you.
Well, CWP cuts the ones through their contractor around any of the utility lines, however, we do cut some of the others on the ride away, and we will come back and do the stumps, just it works operationally to get a group of stumps together, and then remove them. Sometimes that can take a little time, but we've been trying to be a little bit more proactive on that.
Okay, aye, thank you.
And then, Alderwoman, we did purchase this Sharpinski property, and then we've not, and then, Newber needs to set up a call with Hanson and set up a closing with them through Chicago Title.
Okay.
But I can reach out to him if you'd like.
Please do, he's had no communication since we passed this.
Okay.
I can forward you the email if you'd like.
Yeah, just a... Shut him off, shut him off.
Anyone else, any other unfinished business? Alderwoman Conley.
Yeah, I mean, this is not a new complaint. We've had, we've had sound issues every time. What's the plan to fix this?
Yeah, that's not with the clerk's office, that would be with Julie.
Okay.
Joe doesn't even have a little fuzzy thing.
Yeah, I could speak to that. My personal opinion is allow communications with Tom Chi to take over the whole piece of it, because what it has, it's a disjointed effort between the clerk's office communications, and so when you're trying to provide it online and everything else, it'd be better if they are all on one system.
Because I know, and again, I'll say, people really enjoyed having the live streaming meetings on Facebook.
What?
They did.
You never brought that up before.
I have, I have, once or twice. It's like your alleys, you know?
Pretty much.
They're her alleys.
But I just, I would just like to say, I mean, it's, it's important, there are people who follow this at home, and, you know, not, obviously, we're still having capacity limits in council chambers, and people shouldn't have to drive in here to be able to follow us. So I appreciate that you're taking steps to look into that, and hopefully we can have some updates soon. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? What'd you say, Alderman Donovan? I couldn't hear. Anyone else?
I can't hear anyway.
Alderman Williams. I don't know if it's old or new, but anyway, I'm going to say it. So, Mr. Clerk, when people sign up to speak, kind of dealing with the issue we dealt with earlier, and then the annexation, so when they call your office and the form is filled out, do you guys tell them the issue you're wanting to speak on is not, that ordinance is not tonight, or do you not do that, or maybe Corporate Counsel, can we tell people only come on tonight? That, I mean, I'm trying to understand this, because we get this, since I've been on the council, people speaking to an issue, that ain't until next week, or something like that. And that's why earlier I had to say we should allow them to speak, because we let the annexation group that showed up early also, you know, speak, so how do we clear that up, I guess?
Well, it's up to the chairman and actually the horseshoe if they want to pull one off, if it's in committee, and that one was in committee.
Okay.
So the people called to speak on it. So I don't know if they spoke with an Alderman and knew that it was going to be pulled off or not.
It wasn't pulled off.
But we're here for transparency, so we, you know, if someone wants to talk and wants to find out what's going on within, you know, the city, and they sign up to talk, we generally take it.
Okay. Well, you know, I never want to look like we're telling one group, you got to come back on the right, you know, and then we let another group, so that's why I asked that question.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman V. Minnum.
I'd like to thank Alderman Williams for allowing the speakers to speak, because if you look at the agenda carefully, just take a look at it carefully, there's a parenthetical that says, for this, for that agenda regarding the casino, it says postpone to 5.25 dash, uh, .2021. It kind of says postpone to today, tonight. So anyone reading the agenda thinks, oh, this was postponed to tonight, tonight must be the night they're going to consider it, so...
Say what? Say it was the right thing to do?
Thank you, that's, it was the right thing to do, Alderman Williams, so thanks for what?
I appreciate you, Alderman Williams, and everybody on this council's advice, anytime that I'm chair of this committee, so I appreciate you guys. Any new business? Seeing no new business, do we have an executive session, Mr. Zirkel?
No, sir, not tonight, thank you.
Motion, John?
Wait, does anyone else want to proceed?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, we have people signed up to speak.
I apologize, I'll be moved.
I start.
Got it, we're good, though.
Mr. Jones.
Please don't start my time just yet. Happy Mother's Day, Happy Father's Day to everyone. Today is a missing child's day, May 25, 2020. This is an agenda or act that President Ronald Reagan engaged and endorsed once upon a time, but since he got my time started, let me just go ahead and speak. April 20, 2020, 21, rather, my daughter, Yessaya Nicole, was taken by DCFS. This is about life. I don't even know why we got time running if we could talk about garbage and business. I really don't understand why we got time running when we're speaking about a missing child. My daughter's been missing through DCFS, Camelot Family Services here in Springfield, Illinois. They took my daughter illegally because the mother beat her children, two of her siblings with a two-by-four, and she beat my daughter over the knuckles with a wooden spatula. I didn't know, so happened someone come to my, to my family's home and ask somebody, because I see she worked there, I asked her about it because I wanted to go to court, and I'm going to need her to show up in court, because I was in Judge Ash's courtroom at 6B in Family Court. The woman spoke to me and told me that she lost her children, she's got fired off her job, or she's quit, whatever. DCFS, I find out, on her born day, May 26, 2020, that she was beaten, and that she was in the custody of a foster agent named Sheila Faimey here in Springfield, Illinois. How did that happen? I'm in Family Court, we had court between the COVID, we was going back and forth to court. April 20, right after, she's had a smoke session, she smoked out, 21st, she beat the children the next morning. I've been locked out of the courtrooms because I filed a supremacy clause, I filed a Haves Corpus, I filed a 21401. I filed everything I could possibly file on this. I called everyone, probably not all of you, but I engaged the conversation. FBI, Attorney General, State Capitol, DCFS, Markell Smith, numerous times I called his agency. I contacted locals, I contacted the advocates. No, we can't do nothing for you. Everyone's trying to send me through the agenda of going through the services. Well, I had my daughter for four days out of a week to two days and a half with the mother when she violated the child during the COVID. We was waiting on her to come back to court, May 3rd, she beat baby, April 21st. Sangamon County Springfield Police removed my daughter without contacting me. I'm the father, supposed to go to the first relative. My consent was violated. The consent decree of a man, of a father, of a dad was violated here. When you take a child and you remove a child, you have six hours to report to the other parent, unless the parent is deceased, that the child is missing, and where the child will be located. If not, you have 24 hours, if not 48 hours, if not, you got 15 days. If not 15 days, you get 30 days. If not, it's considered as child abduction, visitation interference, or kidnapping, when you're in court under the jurisdiction of the body of a judge. DCFS took my daughter on the seventh floor. I had no information, no notice, no letter, no nothing. No one is deciding to help me, so I'm taking it upon myself, I'm saying, if no one want to follow as you, Corporate Counsel, the Illinois compiled statutes, the municipal code. I want to engage this conversation. I'm asking for a proclamation of emergency to take my daughter back. I'm asking you all, because you all, as of right now, know the judge is in this action. Whenever a civil, whenever a civil emergency or imminent threat thereof occurs in the city and results in threats or results in death or injury of a person or the destruction or damage of property of such extent as to require the judgment of the mayor extraordinary measures to protect the public, peace, safety, and welfare, and the mayor, and the mayor, therefore, with proclaim to write in the existence of a civil emergency. We need a moratorium against DCFS. DCFS, 2020, have murdered, well, been responsible for over 125 children's death. Department of Correction, under 10. When men was being sacrificed on death row, what did the state of Illinois do for a couple of those men that was being violated that lost their life? Moratorium. We had this destruction going on in our community for over, what, 15 years? Maybe longer. This here. This is the ordinance that you all agreed to, maybe not you all, but Sangamon County. Service broil of colored children of Sangamon County. May I approach? No pass?
Can you, you want to make us a copy and just give it to the clerk?
This here is a sketch of children with color over their faces like black scribbling. I don't know if it's Annie Oakley and Alfalfa, but I know they're not black children, nor colored children, and I submit to you all, once again. The article, section 2, clause 3, representation of direct taxes shall be apportioned among the several states which may be, which may include within the union, according to the respective numbers which shall determine by adding the whole number of persons, including those bound by service for terms of years, including the Indians not taxed, three fifths of all other persons.
Mr. Jermaine, a point of order.
Thank you, Mr. McMinister. Your time is up. I definitely heard you, as well as this council. I don't know if it's in our, in our power, but I will say this, there's some gentlemen in the back that I'm sure would, would help you any way that they can. I will help you any way that I can, and, you know, we'll keep working at it, but unfortunately, you know, this body right here, unfortunately, can't do much in that.
When someone is murdered, when someone is murdered and there's crime in the Capitol here, how do you all come together? State, local, municipal, all you all come together when shootings happen. We speaking about missing children, we speaking about a judge that signed, that signed...
If I could, Mr. Chair, if I could, I just want to clarify some, I just want to make sure I understand you correctly. So you have, that's custody, you have custody of your daughter for four days out of the week?
This is the mediation.
And they didn't notify you of being turned over to DCFS because the actions of your wife, is that correct?
She's not my wife.
Okay. Of the other guardian, then?
Yes, the custodian. She was already on probation for 10 years. She just recently pled guilty and just received another 18 months during this action, and they said there's no reason for beating a child two-by-four. If I'd have did something like that, come on, this is the mediation, this is the Judge Ash's order saying that I have custody of my daughter, and that the guardian, I mean, that this order is subject, you know, to 2020 JA110, and it says that Jasmine Bland is to not have no contact with the child. But DCFS is still alive, but I ain't seen my book, my baby in over, I haven't seen my daughter in over a year.
That's what we'll try to do.
Wait a second, this is real, bro.
If you can, if you direct your comments to me, please, if you get with Juan Huerta.
Wait a minute, Mr. Mayor, you're not the chair of this meeting tonight.
I know that, but I'm trying to finish the conversation.
There's the chair over there.
I got it, I got it. So, Mayor, would you please finish?
Yeah, if you would get with Juan Huerta, and then we can try to contact DCFS.
I called Juan Huerta this morning.
Okay, so we'll follow up with it tomorrow.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Sir, if you could give me your name, and I'll give you my card, and I have some contacts at DCFS, I'm happy to help you.
I really appreciate it. I understand, I'm not, I'm not here putting nobody in a disposition, we talking about a missing child. The judge signed off and said that I was admonished, I was not present. That is child trafficking. When we get through with it, that is child abduction.
I can't ima, I'm a mother, a single mother, I cannot imagine what you're going through.
You know, I just spent like 13, $1,400 on in the few days that they let me see her once a week for two hours. They forcing me.
We're gonna, I'm gonna work with you.
I'm saying no.
We're gonna work together, we're gonna figure this out.
You in war, too. We was there for you, supported you.
Jermaine, I've been through everything you're talking about.
It ain't no Jermaine, sir, it's, I'm a dad, I'm a parent right now, sir.
I've been through what you're talking about.
You ain't been through this.
I'm, listen, I was willing to help you any way that I can. All I'm trying to say is...
I want to go take my daughter tomorrow. I'm asking y'all to protect me to go take my daughter on her born day. She'll be five years old, I've been, this is the second time, 2016, 2020, the parent, the other custodian has six DCFS cases, 11 years and 18 months, I mean, 11 years and eight months, six months on parole, I'm on prob, come on, violent register, I ain't got nothing against me. Nothing, I got protecting God's children through the Catholics, just so I could go there and retour, enter school into the other children, because men like me don't get that opportunity? They allow me that consent to do that, but when my consent is violated, nobody, the ears are waxing. You say get a lawyer, what did Jesus speak about the lawyers? Read Matthews and read Luke. I appreciate you all, but if we're going to be tearing around these physical statues here in Springfield, Illinois, or throughout the country, tear down the written statue. This is a disrespect to babies, to children that lost their lives during this era. You know what year this is? July, July 3rd, 1956. This was on my uncle that is deceased. Consent. There's no policy on dads, there's no rights for fathers here. Can I read, can I read, can I read the compiled statute, what it says about law enforcement?
What we can do is, you can talk to me afterwards, there's a process for this, for speaking to, it's five minutes.
Yeah.
All right. Motion for adjournment.
Sir, there's two more. Akash Gajera.
You're welcome.
My daughter's born day is tomorrow. I don't want to lose my life trying to see my daughter.
We'll, we'll take her card.
Just by holding the peace.
Get her card.
I want my daughter. I appreciate you all. Listen.
Hello, everyone, my name is Akash Gajera. My wife owns two hotel in Springfield downtown. Last Tuesday, she was assaulted brutally. She was eight hour in the emergency room. She's still in trauma. They say it's been done, case is filed, but, you know, nothing has been done. I don't see Springfield safe anymore. I've been paying like almost... has been done. I don't see Springfield safe anymore. I've been paying like almost 150 to 200,000 dollar tax. And when we called the cop, they take their own time. When we need evacuation from the gas, they said, oh, you have to go to the court and this and that. We paying each and every guest tax here. They should be evacuated. They are not long-term. We don't do long-term. So hotel motels should be excluded from the long-term thing. We have to fight every day. There are lots of homelessness in the downtown and every police officer and every ambulance knows the homelessness by name. Got to be taken care. It's not safe. I don't feel safe. I apply for the firearm. If I, if this thing happen on my property, I can shoot somebody. That's how I'm pissed off. If you want to see the video, it's here. Connect it and see how she is beaten up. It says not safe to do business in the Springfield.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
Alderman McMenon.
I just want to make sure, where was your wife beaten? What, what street?
At the business, Homestyle Inn, 500 North First Street while she was doing front desk.
500 North First.
We are working eight, 18 hours. We are not a free rider. We paying tax. We do our Indian community, never violent, nothing. Why?
I'm sorry, where is your business at, sir?
By the Memorial Hospital and Mansion View, Governor Mansion, places, trash out by the homelessness. They pee and poo in my staircases. Nothing been done. I called three, four times about the illegal drug activity. They say, oh, it's going in right now. It's not gonna go day, daytime. They have to put something on that.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thank you. And, and sir, I'm sorry about your wife. Interesting enough, we did receive an email today regarding some, another hotel that, that, that lost, I think it was like, I can't remember the, the, it was 16, $18,000 because the, the organization didn't want to come because of, because of the homeless around that particular.
I, I lose every night two, three guests because of those guys. Every evening is a nuisance there. We called the cop and they just raised there and they said, oh, now you have to go to the eviction notice or you go to the court or we can't do anything. It's a long-term. It's not long-term. Hotel motel is not a long-term. We pay taxes for each and every guest. They have to get out if we say that.
I, I mean, it's, apparently it's getting worse, so.
Could we just put him together with, with the commander here? He can talk to you about it. Would you mind talking to the gentleman after you?
Alderman Conley.
Got to do something.
No, I, sir, I agree. I get, please accept our deepest condolences for your wife. That's, that's horrible. And no one, no one should have to deal with that. And I agree with you, though. We as a city have.
If you want to see, take this home and see, you will feel it.
I, I want you to know, we have, we have failed the people who are experiencing homelessness in this community too. And I know it's, we have plans in place or we have, we have people who are trying to make places, but this, this has to be addressed. And, and I agree with you 100%. We, we have to make changes because this, obviously, on a very personal level has impacted you, but on a business level, we see the circles throughout the community. And I'm very sorry.
They should listen to the business. Why we lie? You know, we called the cop for some reason. It's nothing like we just called them and, you know, homeless call just like doing nothing and just call the cop because they don't have next day to pay. They have chase plane, ambulance come, fire department come, police come. It's thousands of dollar expense for no reason and nothing. That guy stays three days in the hospital and come back home and stay again.
Again, I, I hope that our police department can, can give you a little more assistance. But I, I agree and I appreciate you coming tonight because this is something this council has to address. We have to find solutions.
But address this thing. I, I'm telling you, Indian community is not a free rider. We paying it. We, we need at least safety. We need sure, safety, sure that, you know, we, we are doing safely business.
I agree. Is there anyone else to wish to speak on this? Mayor Langford?
Yeah, if you'd get with Commander Dodd and we'll come over and pay you a personal visit tomorrow at the Mansion View.
Mansion View and Homestyle, please.
Okay.
Need to take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Neely Taylor.
Thank you for having me. My, my name is Neely Taylor. And I'm also actually speaking in regards to Mr. Akash Gajera's wife, what happened to her. I myself is also a small motel owner in Decatur, Illinois. And as you know, I don't know the statistics, but I think that 80% of hotel motel is owned by Indian people. And all small motels are owned by Indian people, just like me. And because of this, we're in a small business, we can't afford so much employment, plus with the wages are now gone up, you know, we can't afford. So most of the work we try to do it ourselves. So we run the front desk. We do everything. And it's not right for somebody to just come in and, and assault Indian people. If they can get away with it, they think they can just come to any hotel and just do that? That, that is not right. I feel our Indian life matters. Indian people are not violent people. You know, we, we do our work. We, we pay our taxes. Everything, every, every, every time they want to, you know, do the streets and everything, they, they raise hotel motel taxes. That's all they, you know, and we, we pay it. We don't say anything. We just pay it because we do, we do it. But I think, I was just appalled when I saw that video. You guys should see that video. I was just disgusted and like this, it can, it can go on. I, I felt personally myself. She's a friend of mine and she's still suffering. She's, she was a brutal year attack. It went on like for, it felt like a five minutes. She was just getting beaten up by these two people that walked into her, her front desk. So I just wanted to voice my opinion because I myself is also a hotel motel owner myself. And I do thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alice Ramey.
After hearing all these people speak, my little complaint isn't nothing because I've fought DCFS for 30 years and I know how they are. I call them the dead funeral services for children. So, you know, I don't have any respect for them, but I do have respect for homes that are being, not taken care of by the homeowners. And I believe you all got a picture of that home that has been like that for eight years. Not two, but eight. And I've been fighting them to fix it for a long time. They keep putting anybody they want in there for they can get the $850 every month that the federal government feels like they need to pay. I think it's time that we start making people pay for what they are doing. And that includes the homeless. That includes the, everybody. I think our country is a great country. My uncle and my grandfather and all of them fought for this country, including my ancestors, the Indians. And I understand that people are different, but I think it's time that we make these people pay. Not just $2 or not $280 or whatever the fine is for these citations that they get. But I do know it's time that we make it tough on them. And if we tell them nine days, we go by nine days. Because anybody can get somebody to help them in nine days to do whatever. And if they got the money from the government, they got the money to pay for it. Okay? And on another note is that I understand, because I was in a, in paradise about a month and a half ago, and I know what it is to see people be pushed around and because of what they are. And that's not fair either. Our country was not built for that. We were built to be standing together and fighting and hold our flag high and let our people in. But now that we are in this frame of mind that it's all right, whatever it is, you know, it's all right. It's not all right. You're up here, you're supposed to represent everybody that in your ward, in your, in your, I call them streets, you know, you've got streets, you've got 10 streets. Okay? I think it's time that we look at it at a different way. And we need to look at it to love one another and to respect their opinions as much as we have to, we would respect yours, no matter what. When Doris sat on there, we fought a lot, but I respect that lady a lot. And I knew her husband before I knew her. But it's the idea that we need to get together on this. We need to make these people pay for these houses. I can't sell my house until this is fixed. I mean, this house is a mess. It is a mess. And I got all the leaves in my yard because that fell down. And nobody goes by there and checks and see if they got it done? Nobody. Nobody. But I go by and see houses even everywhere not being taken care of, not because the aldermen don't have the power, it's because people don't complain. I never saw anybody not complain. But yet they get mad when they want to get 24,000 for their house when they think their houses were 65,000, you know? So let's get together and let's make them stand. Oh, attorney, attorney, oh, Mr. Attorney, Mr. Zirkel, sir.
You better look at her.
Sir, how much do you have to charge for them for $250 to get their stuff fixed?
Ms. Allison, gotta address the chair.
Oh, the chair? I'm sorry, Chair. Okay? But hello, Mr. Zirkel, how are you doing, Chair?
What's, what's your question, Ms. Allison, again?
I really want it more, more money. They're entitled to pay, if they have to pay 10,000 for the roof, then they should know that they should have to pay 10,000 if they don't get it fixed. Okay?
I can tell you that me and Alderman Conley is working on some issue, some ordinances to, to really address this. I know Alderman Proctor has put in an ordinance to address this and we, you know, we're, we're, we're keep at it, but there's a lot of legal things that come, come along with these houses, especially when somebody's on them. But I can reassure you, we, we are on top of it. We're, we're gonna turn up these a little bit.
I know, but somebody else was on top of you. So you better get on the other side. Okay? Reverse.
I got you.
Okay.
I got you.
Thank you. And I wish everybody a beautiful holiday and a safe one. And God bless. And please help them. Okay? Because I know what DCF is.
Second.
No, no one else has signed it.
Where's John?
Me too. Me and her is gonna fight. I don't get it. Yes, me and her, that's gonna have to have a fight. Because I don't get it. I don't get it. She wants them, the landlord, fine more for, in her opinion, not fixing his house. And I'm looking at this house and then I'm thinking about my board and this is.